I've once had time to look at the minutes from our last meeting. And if everything's okay on those meetings, those minutes, I just need a motion to approve those, please?
Motion approved.
That get my bid in, any opposed? The first thing we have on our agenda tonight is the second reading of ordinance 2025-001 on pay classification plan.
So ordinance of the personal paid classification plan where the city council, city of Jamestown recognizes that the city's personal policies and procedures to pay the classification plan must be updated from time to time or to remain current and maintain effective and efficient workforce. That there will be a name by city council, city of Jamestown, Commonwealth of Kentucky, but the attached pay classification replace existing personnel compensation plan with classification plan. That the personal policies and procedures and the pay classification plan may be waived or suspended only by the change of ordinance. This ordinance shall become effective for the reading and publication will commence at noon.
Okay, so this is the second reading of this pay classification. So if to pass this, we just need a motion to pass that ordinance for the new pay classification? So do I have a motion to pass that?
There's a huge difference between what it's proposed for Jamestown versus Columbia and Burksville for sure. Burksville's not updated. I'll send down my number.
Do we need to have that high of a minimum? I can understand maybe with the maximums, but does the minimum, because that would mean if somebody that retires right now, we hire somebody in in their place, that would be the minimum that we'd have started, right?
Correct.
Per that pay grade. So the minimum pay grades walking in as a water distribution maintenance worker, maintenance worker, water treatment plant maintenance worker, wastewater treatment plant maintenance worker, customer service rep up front are all 23 pay grades. That's at 1450 an hour. So does it need to be less than 1450? That's the last we started, the last person we employed here at Jamestown is what they started.
And then for each?
I don't think the minimum is as bad as the max, I mean like.
I can understand the maximums with some of the minimums, well necessarily the 1450 one, but I mean.
And what you're looking at, of course, is what if you look at the minimum, anybody like you say start, that's what they'd have to start at. But then I think what we have two people out of compliance right now that would have to be fixed, and then we have.
With all these, yes.
With these, yes.
Right now, we've got several.
That.
I mean, some of these minimums are more than the maximums are in some of these other two cities.
I mean, the minimum and maximum are just numbers. That's the way the ordinance reads, 3% progressive for each pay grade, 75% minimum max. So each pay grade goes up, you're gonna have, and you start at whatever, 1450, and then I've got water treatment operators getting a classification of 5% each class that they get. It's not gonna take a long without it. It depends on how you put it. I mean, normally, it's not somebody coming in off the street, starting one of these jobs. I mean, if it is, then kudos to us, but normally, you've got to get training.
You can go, you can go work fast food for more than can on some of the minimums there. I do have a problem with some of the minimums.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there's, that's, that's what we started, that's what I built, I built this actually from what we started, the last person we hired at and built it up from there is the way I made this. Because we, I took that number, pay grade 23, the ordinance reads 3% progressive for each pay grade, so I went 3% every pay grade between there and 46, and 75% minimum max. I mean, we can change the, we can change the minimum max. Or you change the 3% progressive. Whichever one you want to do, I mean, these are the starting numbers. I mean, it's two numbers there to, one, when you can't, I guess, bring somebody in making $4 an hour, and then the other one is, is where you can't bring somebody off the street making $100 an hour. That's all the minimum max is, I mean, what we do between here and there is what we do sitting in here as a government body. You don't have to start them at 5163 an hour, but you do have to start a pay grade 46 out at 2950. And like I said, most generally, you're working your way up to that pay grade anyway, it's not somebody that's brought in.
Of course, the only, I guess, on some of the, like, you know, some of the workers, on some of the departments, I kind of see you, you're gonna be hiring somebody in, and you've got somebody here that's been here a while, that's, you know, that's not making much more than what you hired somebody in. But then, on the other hand, you can't tell nobody what you hired people five, two years ago. So you've got both, you know, situations, you hire somebody in, new, and you've got somebody that's got license and got years here, that's gonna be close to the same pay, unless you're gonna bump them up, that's what you have to look at. But some of the people that's already been here also, that's, you know, I think, if you bring people in at that manor, then you've got somebody that's, they've got their license, and they got their increases, and you've got so many years in, that you're gonna have to bump them up to, to get them, you know, above what you're hiring somebody in at.
We have, we have people right now that's, that's maxed out at their, at their pay grade.
We do.
Yeah, something's definitely gonna have to be done. It may be different numbers than this, but we have to do something to stay in compliance.
Yeah, we have to do something, basically.
I mean, it may be as simple as, um, have one pay grade. We know if you've got a problem with the minimum max, then we've got 1450, we've got this amount, you all come up with a max as the city of Jamestown can make, the government body sets up, pay for everybody that walks in these doors. I mean, I don't know how to fix it, but like I said, I built it off the last ordinance, plus put in the water distribution. We did not have that department in there, classification plan. We built that department 18 years ago, 20 years ago, and never has been updated. So I put it in this one along with redoing the ordinance from the low pay grade is what we started our last employee at and built it 3%, 75% minimum max. Well, I just built it off the other ordinance. We're gonna have to change the ordinance if there's an issue with minimum maxes. I mean, those numbers are just numbers.
Yeah, I get, the question is, we've got to do something, we've gotta get into compliance with where everybody is in compliance with where the pay scale needs to be. Now, if the numbers, if you wanna relook at different numbers, that's an option, you know, we can do that, that's.
And I guess we need to know what numbers we have problems with, I guess. Because it, it's not gonna work for, it's not gonna work to do a 1% progressive or something like that, because we're not, we're not gonna get out of, we're not gonna get into compliance that way. I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure of my answer for it, but like you, just like maintenance worker 23, then max out at, at 23 is $25.38 an hour.
Well, I guess my thing is, just to be blunt about it, I don't have a problem with the water ones, maintenance, any of that, but when we get into some of these other positions, our minimum is way more than what either one of the other two's maxes are. On part of it.
Okay, which, which ones you want changed?
Well, I mean, you look at the public works director, your minimum's 2950, and you go over here, the max for Columbia's 2855, that's, that means your minimum's more than their max.
That they don't even have a warrant or a surer.
Oh, well, but I'm just saying, that's what I'm looking at.
So you're, you're talking about.
Then you go to Burksville, and Burksville, you're $2 more on the minimum than what the max is for Burksville.
So pay grade 46 is what, what needs to be changed?
I'm not, I.
That's what we're trying to.
Then you turn around, right, and you do city clerk, assistant clerk, it's the same type of things. You see what I'm saying?
I get it, but Burksville's never been changed, public works director, and I get city clerk, and we make mine, whatever, I make $36 an hour, I'll take nobody out there where I may, you can put it on this paper, max it out at that. But we have to, we have to change the ordinance is what I'm saying, we can't, we can't do a 3% progressive.
You know what you're saying?
You have to change that ordinance to higher progressive if you did that, because you would have to get at least high enough to get out of compliance for the ones that's the lowest, you know, the ones that have compliance. If you did a progressive from where they're at now, compared to, like he says, the ordinance says 3%, then 3% would not get you out of the ones that's out of compliance. Either option, I think, you would either be to change that to a higher progressive to you got in, or to relook at these numbers.
You can take that out and pick and choose.
Just like it is, you know.
You can take it out and pick and choose, you know, which ones you want to change. Take the, amend the ordinance for pay classification, amend the ordinance for it to not have a 3% progressive, and then you pick and, we going through, and individually picking choose which one we want to be, what levels?
We've got some people that's, that's several dollars underneath, underneath what they should be making.
I think we've got a couple that I know of, yeah.
If, this will change two people, the way this, this one's built, will have to change. Everybody else can go, I mean, it's not gonna affect it, I mean, you can give raises and whatever, but it allows them to move after that.
Well, we need, we need to find some kind of rhyme or reason for when we give raises, I don't know, really, I don't know how often we've been given raises, to speak true.
Well, the raises that I have given since I've been in here has just been based on looking at somebody that hasn't had a raise for four or five years, and somebody that's in a department that, they've got license, and you've got somebody over here that's making as much as they was, and it's been very little, like maybe a dollar an hour or something to try to get people that haven't had raises for a long time, or people that have been here 15 years making less than somebody that has been here seven, eight years, you know. So the only raises that I have given have been very few, I think, Debbie can verify that, and that's just, or when people just took on another job that, you know, required that their income go up, or we made somebody the supervisor, you know. So that's the only raises that I've given since I've been.
Do we utilize all these pay grades?
We do. The only ones that every, we have people in every one of these, maybe not lab technician on 29, um, we used to have that when we first built these at the super, at the wastewater plant, there was a lab technician down there, that was before, I, I started down there, and that was before me. The police side of it, that's the way it was built, we do have police officers, and one, two is a recruit somewhere, and then a chief. We don't do sergeant lieutenant.
We don't have those.
That's why I.
This time.
And then, I don't know that we have an equipment operator or utility line supervisor. That, that basically falls under public works director as far as a, but for instance, we have somebody in those recruits, maintenance workers, operators in those pay grades.
So what's everybody's thoughts? How, what we need to do, or what you want to see then?
I think we need to take it for another month and give us more time to study.
Well, do you wanna look at trying to create different sets of numbers, or what needs to be done to look at again, I guess is where, we've gotta have something, you know, to, I mean, do you want to, I mean, do you want to start looking at trying some different avenues to see where it comes out, or do you wanna just wait?
Just taking different options, yeah.
Taking different options.
I come to pay grades, like where you've got all the jobs listed, does each job, as it goes down there, increase a pay grade?
Yeah, I mean, if you.
So there's nobody, none of those positions that are on the same pay grade yet.
Well, there's a.
Our maintenance worker be 23, a recruit for the treatment plant, that's somebody coming in, gonna get an operator's license, 25, and then you move into one, two, threes, and fours, the 26s, and the thing about the 26 is, once you start getting that, once you get that out of the recruit status, it's 5%, you know, and then 5% for the last twos, 5% threes.
I was true.
So.
But I make $8 an hour, but time is 30 hours.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
So as you get your license, you can get up to that maximum pretty quick.
Certain ones, yeah, certain ones, that's, that's what.
Yeah, and then, of course, you're stuck there for.
Certain ones can get there, now, like a maintenance worker, there is no, there's no, that I found yet, there's no steel license out there, you know, or, or, you know, one for a scag mower, I even. But, so there, once they're there, like their only raises, like the maintenance department can, can get is.
Next number, years.
Just, yeah, years and, and work and stuff like that, it's kinda like, and years, I mean, you're, you're moving up through, through this, as far as, I think there's a one and two customer service, like on, on, and it didn't used to be that way, it hasn't built into this, as far as, and I took that from one of those cities, actually, the way they built, like their customer service rep one, customer service rep two, so many years of experience, you're allowed to move up a pay grade.
We want to reward people that's gonna stay with us and.
We want to reward people that will stay with us.
Yes.
I don't know that these minimums, some of them, before we need to start, because sometimes.
You can't get nobody started.
No, it's.
Some of those other.
Well, I mean, the only thing, others, other people's gonna come in with their license, or, I mean, you could have a certain rate where somebody comes in with their license already.
Yep.
Could've worked at Russell Springs State, for instance, and you got the same pay grade.
But you're gonna count 30 years of experience toward our years of, of, deal here, wouldn't you, same as a teacher or anything like that?
I mean, they would fall under a water treatment operator, one, two, three, four, or something like that, I mean, they don't have, Russell Springs don't have water, or sewer, treatment, but.
But just for instance, yeah, I'm saying, in another city.
Yeah, I've been, I've been in education 23 years. And if I let Russell County and I go to their county, when I go there, and they're paying me, I'd be counted as 23 years of experience. And that's what, I, I think that if you hire somebody and they got that kind of experience, yeah, they need to be in here.
They're gonna be paid for it, yeah.
But if you hire somebody that's off the street, then they need to be getting paid.
Well, that's it, when you hire somebody off the street, you can't put them in as a class four operator, they would want as a recruit.
In some of the departments that would be making off the street almost as much if you do that, and you're gonna have to raise those people up that's already working up.
You know, that's like.
I mean, just for instance, like I say, I know, just from looking at this, I know one that, you know, that you look at, that you start off the street at 60 cents less than what somebody's been here and's got a license in. So then, you're gonna have to increase the one that's been here and got license and had years, you know, so that's what, that's the thing you're gonna get into, you're gonna have to do some increases, somewhere, you know, you're gonna have to have, have some increases there, that, different options, whatever you all want to look at. We'll look at if we're doing it, or we'll look at, you all looking at it for another month and see, you know, what you all come up with, or even next week, if you come up with something, somebody you want numbers ran, we'll have them to run the numbers, however you all wanna look at it, I mean, if you wanna do a progressive to where you raise it up so much percent, and everybody gets that much, I, you know.
I'd feel a lot more comfortable, I don't have a problem with our maxes, 'cause, like I said, I don't have a problem with the maximums, my, probably I was maybe with the. Because, say Debbie, if Debbie leaves, and you hire somebody in off the street, you're gonna start that person at this minimum? I don't know that that person that's inexperienced and such as that, are they, are they worth that much? That's what I'm saying.
That's why.
If they can do her jobs, they're worth that much.
Oh, I mean, I agree, Toby, but I mean.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying, I mean?
Yeah, I do, I see exactly what you're saying, if you hire somebody in here.
I mean, I'd feel, because we're going over here at Burksville, or Columbia, either one, and putting their minimum, is what our minimums are, and they are maximum where our maximum is.
But the maximum, are you talking about these new maximums he's got here?
Yeah.
Because as I said, they're saying, some of them's already at the maximum.
Because that. It sounds like we're dollars with the, these increases in the maximums, where we'd be, COVID being compliance, that would take care of the compliance issue, but these minimums would take care of, if you couldn't find somebody that was as qualified as what you wanted, and you had to hire somebody yourself.
You're not gonna hurt nobody, do I, less than $15, $16 an hour right now, and here's the problem.
I'm not saying that.
I'm saying, well, for Columbia, they're one of their minimums, the minimum here for assistant city clerk is 1699, I don't have a problem with that.
But if you're talking about lower.
I do have a problem with starting at 25, 45, though.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you've got some of these top lower minimums, you ain't gonna get away from that, when you're looking at 1450 for a minimum on certain jobs.
I don't have a problem with the 1450.
So that's where you gotta go in probably, and look at which ones you think needs to be.
That's what I'm saying, so first, first thing we need to do is stretch to 3%.
You can't just say we're gonna lower all the minimums by 3%, because if you do, you're not gonna get away to work, I can assure you that. But if you, on the other hand, if you leave the minimums, all of them like they are.
And there's nothing says that when you hire somebody in, that you have to start them at that minimum.
Yeah, you do, if you.
Yeah, they're third of the pay grade, they have to be at least that minimum.
You gotta hire them in at what the ordinance is.
At least that minimum, yeah.
Yes.
Even if they have experience.
But that matters, if you've got a minimum that's written in your ordinance, they gotta be hired in at that.
But at least.
At least, least, at least.
That's what I'm saying, you wouldn't have to start them at that minimum, if it's 1450, well, you wanted to start them at 17 or whatever, you could.
They wouldn't be anyway, because if they had that experience, they wouldn't start them at 23, they'd start them at 26. You know what I'm saying, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't be that way anyway, they would start at minimum 1633 versus 1450, now, you could still.
If they may not have that experience, and you may, it may take that to hire that person that you want, that you minimum.
Well, yeah, but you can still start them out at 1633, that's what we want to do, because you just have to hit that threshold as a minimum per this ordinance. That's what I'm saying, you're gonna, I guess you could make this the easiest way possible, make one pay grade, and you all determine every, every employee that comes through this, these doors, you all set the pace for them when they walk in, you get this, you get this, and we'll have it from 1450 to whatever, and, and the government body can decide what every employee's gonna walk in and do.
It just like, just right off looking at this, I see three that I know of right now that will have to be raised up, if, you know, by these, that's making less than what the minimums are in their pay grade. But like I said, too, then you're gonna get into, you're gonna have.
People's been there for a long time, that you're raising them up to what they're making or close to it.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, there's two, there's two that have to be raised, both of them have got 20, 20 years of experience.
I mean, she, well, she ever, that's right, that has to be raised, so she's a, a little pay grade that she was making back.
She's a one, she's a 23.
She is a 27.
Yeah, she's a.
I thought she's 26.
She ain't got it, I don't think, but.
So what, what's everybody, like, you wanna relook at?
I'm, I'm fit to do with somebody.
But then this, next month, we need to decide some, because we're out of compliance, you know, we're gonna be, we've got to be back into compliance.
Yeah, there's a couple, like I said, a couple people ain't making the money they should be making.
They're making less than what this minimum is saying.
So if we're gonna tweak anyone, we need to tweak it and get them caught up.
And we probably, those people that are not making what they should be, because we have delayed here for this would be two months, you know, whatever it go to, we gotta back it up and give them that.
We don't, we don't have, because we've got people making more than.
What they should, what they.
We've got some making more than what they should, but a lot of them, they went and took a classification test, and we haven't changed anything since, you know, for 14 years. So we've got some that, that have been here for 10 years, that are class four operators now, that have went past what? 2011, yeah, 2011 was pay grade, because, you know, they, they went and took 20% worth tests. So we've got some issues with that, we do have some that want raises that, that are maxed out, you know, and they can't do anything, you know, setting.
And this has.
Well, if they're maxed out, I, I know you've got these labels, different classes labeled, but if somebody's in a pay grade of 23, I guess you'd, for example, if somebody's in a 23, they're maxed out, why can't you bump them up to 24?
Well, you can bump, like.
You mean bump them up a pay grade?
Yeah.
Well, some of them you can, but some of them buy like, you know, maybe 26, and I just use the numbers, maybe all water, 26, 27, 28, because they have classifications, sewer has classifications, maintenance don't, so you can't fit somebody from a group that got to require classifications, and you decide it does, because.
Like the maintenance department, I mean, maintenance supervisor for me, equipment operator, 26, maintenance worker, 23, I guess you could make them an equipment operator, I mean, they, I don't know.
I mean, if you know, whatever you want. You know, if, if you type out, and then at a certain point, inflation catches up with them, and, and they keep getting more raises, you know, that's, that's, that's a problem there, because, you know, you don't have inflation as many.
And, and that's what I'm saying, we have some people like that, we have some people that are maxed out, that what you're gonna get into, I'm just saying, is when minimum is some of them, if you don't raise some of them ones up, then you're gonna have somebody coming in with no experience making right as much as somebody that's been here. And that's the things that I tried to go in and look at. And that's the things that I tried to go in and look at, on the ones that I had given, is where they're up to where they should be, or they hadn't had a raise for however many years, or they took on a new role, which, you know, so, that's, uh, and then we've had some that's asked for raises, but they're at the max, and you can't give them a raise if they're at the max, you know, so.
And that's what I was saying, if they're at the max, bumping them up to the pay grade.
As long as you keep them in the class, I guess, because they have to.
But, but I understand if somebody's in a, um, water plant one, and you bump them up just because they're maxed out there, then which they're probably not gonna believe that anyway, because they know what we're gonna give those licenses, so they move them to pay grade anyway.
Yeah, so it, it's a any way you look at it, you're gonna run into issues. I mean, you're gonna have some kind of issues any way you go, because of.
Well, that's when, I wanna be fair to the employees, you know, and, and we wanna um, have the pay scale set to where we can hire and retain good employees. Police department's a good example, you know, we don't wanna be a training ground for the police department, we hire them, send them to the academy and pay for them, go to the academy, and then they come back and the students are gone, and you can't hire paid.
That's something we had to look at, and we have looked at that, because we had to, because we did, we were losing people, and we were gonna lose people. And you, you can't get police officers, Jeff knows, we've said and interviewed and, and tried to, you know, and get people that back out, or, uh, you know, they've got to, uh, we've got a contract now, where they have to sign a contract for three years, where they gotta pay that back, because it's cost us, what, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars to get somebody up to where they can be an officer, you know.
Yes, but even, even actually three years, you know, I mean.
Then they get out, that's right.
Some of them are gone with some higher paid department, and.
And that's why we, and that's, we're just trying to, you know, you can't start a police officer at ten dollars an hour, can you? I mean, you just, so.
Not in people.
So do I, do you wanna make a motion to?
I'll make a motion to pay this one more month.
And let's try to get something figured out, and we're gonna have to, you know, before the next month, because that's, we've got to get that, and you can talk on that, so. Uh, whatever you want us to do, but Tony, make that motion to table it, have a second?
A second.
Second, I nail all in favor, any opposed? Okay, yeah, let's just try to figure something out on that, okay? And whatever, anybody that has any, that looks at this and comes up with anything, call me, I'm at with Tyler and Debbie, or whatever, and we'll try to work that, renew numbers, or we'll try to change it, whatever, or whatever you all come up with.
It's, it's all real.
Yeah, we need to, uh, try to get that done. Okay, second thing we have on the agenda is Ponderosa Pike. And this, as everyone knows, as we looked at this last week, or last month, I'm sorry, then we had special comment as to what the city wants to do as to taking Ponderosa Pike as a city road. If we do take it into a city road, then there's certain things that we have to either change, amend the, uh, ordinance, redo it with different numbers, or we, we leave it as it is, which we hold it. It's, it's a, it's at a size of twenty feet with two foot on each side, which we feel like a lot of the city roads do not require it to be that big on some of these side streets. So this is, we're back to where we are at and what we're gonna do with Ponderosa Pike. I know you all went over and looked at it, I know everybody's kinda been working on this, so I just need to know where everybody's at, and what everybody's suggestions are, what we want to do to get this done.
I think we need to amend our ordinance, regardless of what we do with Ponderosa Pike. The current ordinance, I'm understanding it requires a street to be twenty feet wide with two feet on each side. Uh, I measured my street from my house, it's fourteen wide. I measured twenty across my driveway, and it's like, that's a two-lane road. I think we've got the width of our, the width requirements set too wide, and we need to lower that to fourteen or sixteen. No more than sixteen.
And then you've got to have two foot on each side, you're gonna leave that, right?
Agreed with Tony, I think we need to, I think we need to take it to fourteen, cause there's a lot of the streets, even Murphy Lane goes back in too. Ponderosa Pike's only twelve foot. And, uh, it's, uh.
Well, I think every street in Jamestown, that street should have been two foot wider anyway.
Oh, yeah.
They're all.
You can't favor off those cars, most of them, without having somebody get on with the road.
You can't pass on.
Mine's twelve.
You could pass.
If I leave, don't stay home.
We would never be able to take another street, well, I wouldn't say never, but it would be, uh, very difficult to find a street if we wanted to annex or take another street into the road, so that we could annex up that street. Um, requiring it to be twenty feet wide is, um, cutting our own throats the way I see it.
Well, and that, that's where we have to start, if that's what we, uh, you know, if that's what we decide we wanna do, is change that ordinance, that's where we would have to start to know where we're going with Ponderosa Pike, or any street after that.
Well, fourteen foot is, is wide enough for two cars, and then plus from twenty to fourteen, uh, the amount of blacktop you'd have to put down, and that's quite a bit.
Yeah, if somebody's got a, a small farm, they wanna divide up and sell off into small tracts to build home zones, and they put a road in, and if we're requiring them to make that street twenty feet wide before we'll annex it, uh.
So you know, a lot of land too.
Yeah, um, it's costing somebody a lot of money, but I don't believe it's necessary.
I, and I think you, you know, if we're gonna look at changing the ordinance, that we need to decide is there anything else that we need to change in that ordinance at the same time, certain things we need to add to it, any requirements, anything we need to take out, I mean, we just need to, if we're gonna change the ordinance, we need to get it how we want it and change it.
I haven't seen the actual ordinance myself, I just know it says three, that three twenty-three wide before we annex. Or before we take it into the city road system, I guess.
Um, it, it does, and it says it has to be blacktop before we can take it into the before we can take a road in, it has to, well, per ordinance now, it has to be twenty foot, two foot on each side, and has to be our blacktop before we can take it into the city. So there's things that you need to think about as to what, what order we would wanna leave everything else as it is, and just change fourteen foot, or do you want to?
Why does the street have to be blacktop before we take it in?
Well, when I was county attorney.
I know the reason.
When I was county attorney, it was required to be done so the county would not be out the expense of having the blacktop. If somebody wanted to develop a place and were to develop a blacktop road into the county, which would be the same label as the city, which would be cost of that, uh, expense of money, although there's no requirement that the city blacktop a road, that we could take a road in, which would be a city street, doesn't mean it couldn't be gravel, you know, for a while. So it'd go both ways, really, I mean.
Yeah, but, uh, moving back to the county, though, if the county, uh, we need to be annexed, and we need to be expanded, you know, the county is, is kind of different there. I agree, uh, and I, it's, it's, I understand the county, though, regardless. You know, you're all those county property rights, regardless, I agree, but it's kind of, uh, it's gonna be hard to expand there, but if we're gonna expand developments where the developer consists on blacktopping the road, you know, I guess it'd be a problem too. Am I right? Yeah?
Well, yeah, sure, but you're gonna have to have a, 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 well, pay that.
Our, our current ordinance says it only has to be six inches of dent gray, no blacktop. Which is bad, because.
What's the width, what width?
It only have a width on it, this, uh, the only thing different is it's a thirty foot from center right away, so. But, but it's not good, cause you, you're not getting any more money from the state to maintain, so you're taking in something that you gotta keep up.
But the right away's thirty, but the road could be fifteen, could it, that you run on?
Yeah, it, it's not, it's not good, but, you know, we're, we're a ways away from anything to change, I think, but it's, yeah.
And this says, road bed shall have a minimum of four inches of dent gray aggregate as the base, or six inches if thought necessary by the public works department.
Uh, ours is supposed to be six, but who's going out there and measuring anyway? Hard to tell if it's a touch drop, but, you know, I'm saying, it's, it is hard, it's hard for both the city and the county.
And then it goes into, and will, shall be sprayed as a primer, followed by two inches of rock blacktop. So there's where you get, you, right now, you have an ordinance that says it's gotta have twenty foot wide, two on side, and it's gotta be gravel put down, and it's gotta be blacktopped to take it into the city.
Well, if you take it in, that means that area will provide its city police protection and other things, you know, regardless. Trail, it may not be the best road in the world, but at least, that's a part of it temporarily, until something better can be done. Back years ago, before water lines was put out all over the county, you know, the city kinda had a bargaining chip that if you'll agree to annexation, we're in water line.
Right.
We don't have it anymore, we, we've got nothing to.
To leverage it.
Yeah, nothing to incentivize somebody to want to be annexed.
Well, I'm gonna motion, we leave the ordinance the way it is, except change it to fourteen foot wide instead of twenty foot wide.
Okay, I've got a motion by the Y, that all on this ordinance stays the same, except changing it to thirteen foot to two foot on each side. Do I have a second? Second, I'm in, so all in favor of that?
Okay.
Any opposed? Okay.
Now, as to Ponderosa Pike, I went out there before the meeting tonight. Um, as we discussed with Ryan about his part and such as that, I think he's actually went above and beyond what we even asked him, because he's got it laid out fourteen foot wide. Got it gra, ditch is graded on each side, he put in the tile, he bought the tile himself, instead of us having to buy the tile. Yeah, you run in some issues, I think you hit that high pressure. So, I mean, but it, since none of us ever knew where it exactly went, goes right up the middle of Ponderosa Pike. So now we know where it's at.
Runs under the road?
It would be under, what, under Ponderosa Pike, so.
See, that, that gets you in a problem there, when you blacktop over sewer line.
Well, it's a high pressure.
Well, I understand that, yeah, but, uh.
I know what you're saying, but I mean.
Uh.
I don't know.
Jared had that plaque for, for, uh.
I brought in the plaque.
That's, that's sort of, you know.
I think the line's gonna run left handed to the road once it.
I think it does too, because it end up, crosses on up for about where the Johnson's barn was, along the, right in there.
Out there in that field, I think it's gonna run left handed to the road.
I think it actually, the cross is there at that ditch where you hit it, and I think it actually comes up through probably underneath those apartments.
That's what it looks like to me, too, it's not gonna miss that much.
If I, yeah, it won't miss it much, it at least goes through the backyard.
Yeah.
But everything's ready, Eddie's done it in there, I think, and they've already graded it down, it's ready to be blacktopped. I know we're all worried about what may happen with something else sometime later, but that subdivision was taken in, that part of it, and that was a street, the plaque that I had pulled from Murphy Barn to be invited, shows that street.
Ponderosa Pike.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's called that or what, but it shows it as a street in that subdivision. The only reason that that was already blacktopped was the county blacktopped it several years ago, they came in, shipped and sealed it. Blacktopped it back to the house I had built, and then they turned around and blacktopped it from there all the way down through.
Well, you're talking about Murphy Lane, not Ponderosa Pike.
Right.
Ponderosa Pike is now, it's a private road.
Why, yeah, we didn't go in and blacktopped that part there, I don't know what they was doing.
Before me, it was laying.
Yeah.
Like Tyler, Tyler's the only thing.
Yeah, Tyler, Tyler him held it up then, so.
Tyler could do, do.
Well, what you're looking at is, you know, what do you, if you're gonna change the, uh, ordinance to that, then it fits the ordinance, but what you're looking at is if you're gonna take it into the city, it has to be blacktopped, or are you looking at the city doing all of it, the city doing a portion of it, the city doing gravel, or what's?
Well, the gravel's already done, everything's ready. That's where you can, I make a motion that we pay for the blacktop. He's already paid for the rock, the tiles, done all the work, it's, he's done got it all ready. Everything else gonna do is, you had to come in and do the blacktop, we'll be able to buy the blacktop lot cheap and even best, and we'll drive it around.
You're looking probably about twenty thousand dollars.
Well, that's my motion. Y'all go with it, Harry, if you want to.
I'm going second motion.
I got a motion by the Y to pay for all the blacktop at Ponderosa Pike, and a second to Tommy. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Tyler and Pondera.
What originally?
Aye.
Mr. Morgan?
Uh.
Tony, you're up.
Aye.
Barry, you got it?
No.
Theresa Kim?
Aye.
Wilmer?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll get that taken care of, we'll get, uh, a hold of whoever needs to do this and get on it now, or we take it all into the city.
Well, that's what I thought we were doing, yeah.
Well.
It's already in the city base, it's just never been completed.
It's not, the road's not a city road, it's a private road, and you have to take them into the city. And the requirements are, that it's gonna be blacktopped, which it will be, and it's fourteen foot wide, so now, I just want to know that they want to take it into the city.
Yes.
I make a motion, we take it into the city road.
Same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who owns the, owns the property, mayor, is it, own, Mr. President, uh, who owns the property, cause who's it running through, anybody's white line?
You've got.
It's a dead end street, the dead ends down to Brian's, I just.
So they crossed it over somehow, right there?
No, it's a road.
It was just.
It was a road.
And my road crossed over to a three though.
No, what I'm saying, it was cut out.
There's four lots on the side.
So it was, it was eliminated, and it was developed, it was not just eaten by, it was set aside, and marked for may haul.
I'd sleep, there's too many questions, Jared had the, had the plaque for, there's this reason I don't even know. There was originally a road on your old lower end planned, wasn't it?
Well, on my side of the case, there was, but that's a separate farm from the Brian's.
That's a whole separate subdivision.
I mean, why would there be two roads, uh, somewhere?
Cause it was two separate subdivisions, and Duckens held five foot around the entire subdivision of Farroks, because at that time, our city manager would not, they refused to help the Duckens family and Wilkerson, whenever they built the subdivision, help them with water and sewer lines. They had to pay for all of it, and so if I didn't pay for all of it, then we're keeping five foot around, cause ain't nobody tying it.
The only reason I ask, we've got the proper ease, but to put blacktop on, on, before we blacktop. The only reason I ask, we've, we've got the proper easement to put blacktop on, on, before we blacktop. If it's, if it's not, if it's already that way, it wouldn't even need one.
Wherever the plaque is, I brought the plaque of Murphy Farm in.
We will need one, just to take it in.
Yeah.
So, we'll, we'll, can I take it into the city, let it, to show, to show it's a...
Take the road in?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, but I, it, we go.
Okay, but nobody owns the road bed itself. All right, my understanding is that that is an easement, what'd you say, it's thirty foot wide easement?
I think so, I think it's what he calls it.
So, when it was wired it out, that was where nobody owned that?
The main, Murphy Lane was left open, and that road there was left open because Brian's property was part of the Murphy farm.
That's how I deal with that.
There's four blocks down that side going into him that another fella owns. More than likely, I expect somebody that'll be housed is built there.
Ideal situation.
At least one or two.
Okay, we're gonna pass on, get on past this, and then something else. Uh, let's see. New business, but Tyler, we got the municipal road aid contract and resolution.
This is the annual road aid resolution, uh, we gotta pass, we gotta get a motion of sacred contract and motion second, vote for the resolution. Um, it's the same contract as every year, the, uh, air portion chair is forty-three thousand, six forty-six oh seven. I think last year was, uh, forty thousand, seven hundred, uh, and while for that, it's around about thirty thousand dollars, the one that road aid has given us this time. We just say motion of second, our contractor.
Any other?
Still move.
Motion by the White? Second. Second by Ian? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was a little quicker.
All right.
Resolution adopting and approving the execution of municipal road aid contract between the Incorporated City and Commonwealth Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Department Rule Municipal Aid for Fiscal Year Between July 1, 2025, Provided the Kentucky Revised Statutes, accepting all streets referred to therein as being streets which are part of an incorporated city. We resolve the legislative body of the Incorporated City, the legislative body of the Incorporated City, does hereby accept all streets referred to in said contract of being city streets which are part of the Incorporated City. The legislative body in the Incorporated City does hereby ratify and adopt all statements, representations, warranties, covenants, and agreements contained in the contract, does hereby accept said contract, while such acceptance agrees to all the terms and conditions therein stated. The chief executive officer of the said incorporated city is hereby authorized and directed to sign said contract and send forth on behalf of the legislative body, and the city clerk of Jamestown is hereby authorized and directed to certify thereto.
Motion to approve the resolution for the road aid contract.
Motion approved.
Second. Second by Ian? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, next thing we have, we have, uh, Rick, Ricky Robbins with Pat, a block, second?
Yes.
Okay.
No. It's a, it's a solo living place, and, uh, I started here in Jamestown about two and a half years ago, and, uh, I'm down in Russell Springs now, so I really don't know how this work, and, uh, I've done all this myself, and so I didn't know nothing about asking for help for these guys, but they are residents that come from Jamestown and Russell Springs, and they come to be solo living, it's not a rehab, so I don't get any government assistance or anything. What I do is, I take these guys when they complete rehab, and they broke bridges with their family, or they got no place to go, and so I bought one place that holds up five in the house and three in the apartment behind it, and then I leased two other places, and I filled all the beds up. And so what I've done, I've, I've worked for Stevens Pipe and Steel, and then I flip houses on the side, and I use that money to help these guys to get back. I've got a list of their names, and so the thing about this is, uh, they are citizens of Jamestown, of Russell Springs, and, uh, it showed that it's worked by giving them a safe place to go, and what I'm running into, what I'm here to ask for today is, uh, just some money for starter kits, like when they come there, some of them don't have a job, they don't, they don't have hygiene stuff, stuff like that, because I've asked for some money for some other things, uh, because I furnish, I furnish everything, uh, and so it's just, when I had it down there, three people, it wasn't that hard, I mean, my wife, now it's fourteen people and it's full, and so, uh, in between times, it just makes it hard, like I've got two guys that come down, they've got, they've got nothing. Uh, so I'm able to take them and get a job, like Bruce's, Stevens Pipe and Steel, the one started down here at the pizza place. Uh, and so I wanna possess and voice some money for starter kits, like for hygiene stuff, soap towels, socks, towels for them to wash with, and, uh, you know, I asked, uh, I, I would just like to ask for just a thousand dollars just to help those guys out, and I don't care to turn the receipts back in, but it is for our, our community, and it's for helping these guys. Again, I've got a list of their name, uh, and what they're doing, uh, out of fourteen guys, uh, the first one, uh, he's getting at Bruce, uh, one over a year, another ones went from Bruce to Tyson's Food, uh, the other one works at Spark Recovery, uh, one of the new guys started at Stevens Pipe and Steel, uh, the other one works at Spark Recovery, uh, another one works at Tyson's Food, I've got two that's disabled, and, uh, one of the new guys works at the Huddles House in Stevens Pipe and Steel, and the other one works at Spark Recovery, and he's a, he's a group leader at Bruce. So right now, I've got three of them that's just getting started, and so it's just making it hard on me and my wife just to, just to do this, because up until a month ago, there was one house that was totally empty that I've got leased for six hundred a month, but I paid a lot, buy the electric and the water, I had one guy, so he was able to pay me a hundred and twenty dollars a week, but the lease still come, the insurance still come, the location still come, but if I would've put that guy out, it would've fall back on the cities and the counties. Uh, he's gonna wind up committing, just like I am recovering at two, he's gonna wind up committing a crime, he's gonna be down in our jail, we're gonna be paying thirty thousand dollars a year to support him, and then he's gonna get back out, his family on the morning, around, tells he's stealing and taking stuff from you. So I do drug test them, I make sure they get employment, I make them go to meetings, uh, do self-help groups, and so I'm starting to watch these people rebuild their lives. It's a, it's been a, it's been a good thing, and so in two and a half years, it's went that far, and so I don't, I don't charge our government, I don't charge our state, I don't charge anybody, it's just them living life on life's terms. And so I'm struggling with them, but it's, so I'm here just to ask for that help. That's what I'm here for.
How do you get the people to begin with? I mean, do you have a process that, how do you get them?
Well, the process is what it is, they complete the Spark program, they complete up here at Anchor Day Recovery, this is not a group. Uh, and so what they do is, uh, once they come out of there, uh, going through rehab is easy, I mean, you know, getting six months in, and before it, getting clean, so, the thing about it is, then when you get ready to go back to the street, uh, just like me, my family didn't want me there, because I was going there in the jury box and stealing stuff, so they said, you can't come here. So then I found myself right back out there, not a safe place to go to, and somebody to show me, uh, there's a difference, you know, just being honest, and start to be a productive member of society and going to work. So these guys, they, I don't give them no short, there's no shortcut, they cut the grass, they wash their dishes, they wash their clothes, and they gotta go get a job, you know? And if they don't abide by those rules, I don't put them back out on the street, what I do, I offer them to go back to rehab, or either what I do, I take them to the homeless shelter over in Somerset that I've got with a guy, and then that way, I'm not just putting them right back out, now they make the choice where they go after that. But, so what I'm doing is, I'm, I'm really working, and it showed that it's worked. I've got guys that's been there, uh, almost two years, a couple of them over a year, some there eight months, and they're working, they're paying taxes, uh, they're starting to buy cars, and so the thing about it is, like I said, it's, it's just been overwhelming in my life. I mean, you know, I drive a Ford truck for seventy dollars a pair, I would give them every dime I got, but I also gotta pay my electric and my water, you know, so I'm, I'm really, I would do that, and I, I bought a building and I was gonna put twenty-four guys in there, and then God said, that's not what you're gonna do, you know what I'm saying? So if I can sell the building, I wouldn't be here asking for nothing, I would just do it myself, I believe in them that much, and it's changed lives. So, uh, that's what I'd be asking for, and I don't care to turn the receipts in, that's what it'd be spent for, or even, I don't care to have a budget and go down into the dollar store and work and get it for them, and just have them to work with and do it, I just need a little help, and it's really done in our community. It's showing the difference. Um, you see these guys starting, uh, to get back, uh, ham certified, uh, through Frankfurt, uh, through the narrative thing, uh, that guy there gave me his information again today, his name is, uh, Damon Preston, and he started out a new, a new thing, so he'd be coming back through, and so what I do is, uh, I give them a bed, dresses, handles, only thing they bring is their clothes, and then they have the opportunity to change. And I'm saying, get your vet is just homeless and helpless, and it's really changed them. And so, you know...
It's impressive that all of them's working, I think, of all the people that you've got, that they all have a job, except a couple that's disabled. So, uh, any, have you got any questions I wanna ask Mr. Robbins or anybody?
You, you say you're in Jamestown too?
No, I was in Jamestown, what I did, and I look to come back to Jamestown, I bought a house down here on Columbia Avenue, it was the first one that I opened up. And so, uh, and, and I was able, fortunate as I, that I bought it and I remodeled it, and somebody offered me eighty-five thousand dollars for it, so I was able to sell it and purchase two more to where I could have some more guys, because I had people just wanting to come, and I had no place to put them. And with me being a recovering addict and having that choice, I know what it'd been for me today, uh, in Jamestown and Russell Springs, uh, since I've been here, I liked it so much that I moved here, I bought a home, and my wife has remodeled four homes and been able to resell them and help the community that way, uh, and, uh, I've held a job at Stevens now ever since I've been here, uh, got a few promotions and stuff, but, uh, so, some of the guys that's actually there is from Jamestown, and so, I mean, if, if they leave my place, they've got nowhere to go to, so they're gonna come back to the streets of Jamestown, and they surely committed crime and used drugs again, and so the thing about it is, uh, you just have to be there to see it, to see a young man come in and not have anything, and someone be able to talk to him, and tell him what it's like, and his life start changing, you know, and, uh, this is, this is our family, I mean, it's our family, it's, uh, you say it's not only that, but it's good people, they just don't know nothing different, and so it's not just a halfway house, an apple and apples with each other and what, that it's okay to hold each other accountable, you know, it ain't bragging, they'll tell him, I'll sit by his attention, this road in the council, they've never had that before. And so you start seeing them come back to life, you know, they start pulling up, and night and lunch, you see them pull up in a vehicle that they purchased. Uh, you know, they didn't have no teeth, now they got new false teeth, and they're smiling, and they're happy, and, uh, uh, so, and when I give them a drug test, they've asked the drug test, so it's a positive thing, and I, and I did ask, uh, first of all, so I'm not asking y'all for much, and I want, if you can, I'm very grateful, if you can, then, you know, I'll just have to just figure out something else, but, uh, yeah, I would put it to good use, it wouldn't be just something that'd be thrown away.
How long are they allowed to stay?
They stay as long as they... Uh, what I'm doing is...
Five years?
Uh, if it takes five years for them to do that, what I do, I suggest that they stay there, and what they do is, they get stabilized, they get a driver license back, uh, if they owe any fines or anything, they get to pay that, they're not gonna go to jail, so, uh, I've had four of them so far that what I've been able to do is take them, and then what they do is, they go ahead, and, and one is a meal operator out here at Stevens, but they got a car, and they was able to go purchase their own place. Well, I was fortunate enough, I had the furniture that I bought for the building, so I was able to help him with the furniture. And so now, he's still a productive member of society, still cleaning supper, and he's helping other people, he's letting them know, so, uh, most of them usually stay somewhere, somewhere roughly between nine months and a year and a half, just roughly what they do. You know, uh, that's the longest, what I've had to say. Now, I've had some that come there that couldn't stay there for two weeks because they weren't ready to get honest, you know what I'm saying? And so I'm very, I'm not gonna let them contaminate the other ones, uh, so you've got them only with a, a little bit of love and compassion, those are all the ways. And having a safe place to go, that you can lay your head, and just know that you're, it, it's a bad situation to be out there and not in there, just to be homeless and helpless, and it don't make them bad people, they just make bad choices, and so if we can flip that around, then what it could be, it could, it very well is to one of my daughters right now, and the only thing that I can do is just keep doing the next right thing to show her that I have changed, and that things change, you know, and you're looking at a guy that, uh, three years ago, y'all just don't have nothing to do with me, and you're looking at a guy that's probably made two hundred thousand dollars the last two years, and I'm bragging about it, uh, but my hope and temper has changed because somebody gave me that help. Uh, today, I'm trying to be honest with people, uh, and not only that, uh, by doing that, I'm starting to see that just the little things in life, just, uh, like, like he was talking about, what the world was gonna be, he was saying that you wanna make sure that people get paid right, uh, you know, fourteen dollars a pair, I agree with y'all, that's not money with inflation today. You go to the grocery store, it's fourteen dollars a pair, you know, you know, two hundred and eighty dollars at the grocery store, and you take home seventy dollars, and then you gotta pay a electric and more, and all that stuff, so I understand that too, so, just the honesty of it and, and stuff, uh, it goes along with it, and that's what I try to do, and, uh, that's about all I can say about it. Like I said, I'd be grateful, I would, but it showed off what I'm doing, and my back, I don't have that much money, I don't have to pay for the hygiene stuff and the towels and stuff. It isn't about the money, it's just about me being able to help and speaking, so I'm okay with it coming down to City Hall, you know, with the bags of shampoo and washing detergent and taking it to them, you know, I'm okay with that.
Where you, where you locating this group?
Uh, I've got one on Highway twenty-seven, I've got one at nine eighty-five Main Street, and then another one is right downtown, it's across from the RCR, there's a AA building there, it's the Alanoir White House straight across from it, I, uh, what I did is, I leased it and went in and totally renovated it, because there was a eyesore down there, so, uh, I leased it for six thousand dollars a year, I went in and spent about five on repainting it, drive along, put electric, uh, and stuff in, and so, uh, that's where it is.
I'm sorry, what's the name of, uh, I didn't catch it to start with, what's the name of your?
Patty's wife.
It's the Patty wife, this is my wife, Patty, and I named it after her, and we started off down here at two eighteen, uh, West Cumberland Avenue, and the house was full of dogs and pee and stuff, and I went in and remodeled it, it's a little white house, and had to start on it, and, uh, so I bought it, and went there and cleaned it up, and somebody offered me that money for it, so I was able to see where I could go ahead and purchase two more and help some people, so that's what I did with it.
And just, I will say, I do know, I've met these people before, I met Patty a while back, and I do know that this is something they've been doing, trying to, uh, they've been working on for a while, trying to get established, to get people and to help people, because I helped with a little bit of things at my primary job, but this is just, I didn't know that it is something that they are doing. That's all I can, you know, uh, that it's something that they've been working on for a while, trying to get it going.
Two eighteen West Cumberland, is that the old Cumberland Lodge down here?
No, what it was, there was a guy here, I really don't know a lot of people, there was a guy named Cannon Ball here or something that had a junk door.
That's how it stand.
His daughter was the one that had it, they said it was his old house, that's the one that was, so when I went down there, the horse was falling, and and so that's all I can tell you about it, I remember it was a little, uh, maybe a little into it, or something like that, uh, and so, uh, uh, we bought it and we redone it, and I had three guys, and that's where I first got my certification, and, uh, really, I didn't think that I would wanna do that. Uh, but like I said, with me going through the same thing, uh, I know what it took, uh, just to, just to give them a foothold to go ahead and get started, it really worked, it's worked beyond my, beyond my wildest dreams, you know what I'm saying? And, uh, it, it really isn't about, it isn't about the money, if I had the money just to do all of it, I wouldn't worry about it, and so, uh, the thing about it is, I've got, I've got two new guys, and like the, the first, the first one, he'd get his first paycheck from Stevens Pipe and Steel, but when he come, he come from a bricklayer. He had two pair of socks, and I gave it to him, this one here, so then my wife was able to go purchase him some clothes, and he used steel-toed work boots, and then come out of our pocket, you know, and so by the time I got done, it's like a hundred and eighty dollars for everything, for his food, his boots, uh, hygiene and towels and stuff, and so, now he gets a check that he's gonna get three eighty a week, you know, gonna start off twelve dollars and that one, and so it's hard to go back and tell that man. And what is he, what is he doing for it if he can't see some, you know, and so, uh, and then the other little guy, he started at the pizza place that's two feet, and he did some job, and so, uh, he's been there about And so, he's been there about four days. And so the thing about it is, he's just a baby, he's about ten years old, you know what I'm saying? And so, if he hasn't had a drug test, the thing is willing to go to work. So we went and got him towels and wash rags, soap and conditioner right before I went to work today at two o'clock. And so, and so it'd be, it would be well spent. And like I said, I don't care to keep up with it and wring it back, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be squandered or nothing. And the thing about it is, if you take one of them, and I just go in there and tell them, look guys, I just can't afford to pay this extra stuff, so go and throw your stuff out and go, you know what I'm saying? They're going to the streets and they're not, they've got no choice but to turn back to stealing. And then wind up down there to jail and us paying our taxes to house them. So if we can rehabilitate some of these people and, and show them something different as well. And so I've had five to leave. And I've put about two out and the rest of them has either went on to get their own places or went on to further their education somewhere or something. And so it's showing that it does work.
So, if no one has any questions, or if they do, go ahead. If not, you're asking, I believe, for a thousand dollars is your request, to try to get these people started, so, nobody has any questions, I need a motion if we want to approve the thousand dollars to donate to this.
I don't care that it doesn't make a thousand dollars to it, but I, I think it needs to be done maybe. I mean, I don't wanna just write a check, you know?
Anything about, I mean, we do-
Do what?
We do twelve hundred, we do a hundred a month to that thing with stuff, that, you know?
That's, that's, that's great, I mean, that's, that is perfect for me. Or you don't have to give it to me, I mean, it'd be different, good. We can write it to Roses and I can get the stuff from Roses. We're right down here at the Dollar Store in Jamestown, I'm good with that. I mean, 'cause that's what it's gonna go to, that way it goes right back to this city and I'm good with that. If it did come to that, I'd be very grateful, but I'm, I'm good with that.
Well, another, I guess another question I do have. You said these people are from Jamestown, Russell Springs, Russell County.
Right.
Have you approached Russell County, the fiscal court, have you approached?
Yes, I have, I have, oh, Russell County. And what I approached them about was some other things, is just like what I said, we've got three places. When I opened the luggage stuff, I did buy new beds to hood them. And so what I approached them about is, is other things, I, I really didn't know how about school and about doing this. So what I approached them with is just like, from expenses, some expenses, like to get these guys back and forced to work. So I moved and bought a little van myself. And the other thing is just like appliances, like to start with, I've been able to buy one new washer and dryer set. And I go and I buy a used washer set and I get a lot of new stuff down here at the corner on West Cumberland. And so, what I do when I buy that, like the refrigerator comes out, I had had a fridge and that thing. And so I approached them with that. And some other, just different stuff, dresser, just, just different stuff. And some of the, what I approached the county about was just like what I was telling y'all about. It doesn't mean just because I've got a house with four guys there, two of them may just decide not to be there, you know what I'm saying? And so the electric bill, the water bill, and the lease continues to go on. And so if I'm out here and I'm racking eighteen thousand dollars a year and I'm giving this guy six thousand and spending four, five on his house to get it and paying those bills, I'm only working for two thousand dollars a year, you know, to help somebody else. So when I went into it, I agreed not to, I didn't want, everybody said you could do it, and so I decided not to go that route. Just let these guys, these guys is gonna go to work, we're gonna pay rent, they're gonna buy new clothes, they're gonna get, once they get up and do that, I don't need that, you know what I'm saying? But when they come with nothing, I take them to account, I'm like seventeen dollars a month.
Okay, what did, what help did the county give you?
I asked for ten thousand dollars over, for that, this is what I asked for.
What did they give you though?
They're looking at it and I'm gonna go back next month, so I really don't know. I, I'll just be honest with you, I've never done this before. So this is my first time ever talking to anybody about it or stuff, so I'm really, I'm being honest, I don't know a whole lot about it, so, that's just-
Have you been to Russell Springs City Council yet and asked for help from there? Cause you said these people were in Jamestown and Russell Springs.
No, I haven't been there, like I said, this is, just to be honest with you, I thought I was going to Russell Springs. I didn't know, I, I didn't know the difference, I just opened up here and they told me that was happening here, so they put my name on it for it. And then over there, they put me in, so I went over there for it. I've never done it before, I ain't a very bright colored, kind of education, tempered education with TV, so I'm too bad. But I do know what I'm doing works for people. And so I just wanna do some help, that's just the honest truth.
Well, I thank you for watching for them, but, of course, this is Jamestown City Council, Russell Springs is their own city council.
I, I am.
Are you, you are the ones talking to them too?
No, I, I, just to be honest with you, if y'all would be able to do it, I'd be good with that. If not, I, I don't know much about city councils, I think if y'all would like to do that, I'd be very grateful. If you can do it, that's understandable. But I think after this, I'm gonna stick with it, the, the county and just, I had to take off work for, from five o'clock till whatever time it gets up in here, and I gotta go change, go back to my job. And so, like I said, I don't know a whole lot about it, I'll just, here at the county, it does affect people from Jamestown.
But it affects people from Russell Springs too, that, that was kinda my point, you know?
Well, I mean, if you, if you feel that way, if they're in the city council, I'm the most definitely approached them. I asked them for a thousand dollars too. I won't go no more on them than what I went on y'all. And I give you my word, the next one, I will approach them because it's gonna be your rock. So I will approach them on that too. And spend for the same, for the same thing. And like I said, I'm good with y'all, that's what's gonna be spent on, I want for my benefit is it be spent on that. And I'm good with going right down here to Jamestown Dollar Store and getting stuff for them.
We just need the judge to make a motion to approve the thousand dollar request, I need a motion to do that.
Well, I'm not opposed to giving him a thousand dollars if he's doing this, but I would prefer to do it, maybe he'd bring in bills from wherever he's gotten stuff at and just have a check wrote each month? As a reimbursement, would that work?
I, I'm good with that, I mean, that is, that's, that's perfect. You know, and, and the thing about, if I don't get a new person, then it doesn't hit like that. So I'm perfectly fine with that, and it may not even duck to the thousand dollars or whatever, just when I have a new person, just like this week here, I've got two new people. And so it's took, right after two hundred and forty dollars out of my four hundred and sixty dollar paycheck already. So that's where I'm at with it, you know? So I'm perfectly good with that, any of y'all do, I'm okay with it. That's what it'd be used for, so, so I'm, I'm good with that. And I'll, I'll, I'll whatever the rules and regulations that y'all want me to, so, yes.
What do y'all think?
I like where you put that one time, I like where you suggested that. Put them in the max of five thousand dollars and pay them, bring their receipts in to handle each month or whatever.
Whenever you guys think, yeah.
Thirty thousand dollars a month, that's what you said? I, I'm, I'm ready for that, and I, and I, I'll, I'll do that. And it might just be sixty dollars one month, and then it could be forty, whatever it is, I'm good with that. I'm very grateful for just whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I appreciate what you're doing for these people because you are right when they, after they've been through years of addiction and then they finally decide to get clean and it's over and try to get their life back to living with the weeds and all.
And it's really, it's working, it don't work for everyone, I mean, I don't get wrong, I can't count, I can't say a hundred percent, but it's really working and you can go see it. I mean, I pulled up there today and we're mowing the grass and they're cooking chili. Three of them got big, was out there and they can do their job over a year, you know what I'm saying?
So now, they pay you every time, once they get a job?
When they get a job and stuff, what it is, is I've got three in one place and they pay a hundred and twenty dollars for it. And if I didn't know it, I wouldn't make that money. I've got five in one place and they do the same thing. But the only thing about it is, the other one, I've got two men and the one across from RCR, I've got four in it. And you may have four in there and two of them just decided to get up and they just disappear and, so then you got two guys there. But overall, it's really, it's, it's working. Right now, I've been west, nine of the guys, it's about seven of them has been there over six months to eight years. The rest of them's floating around for six months. And the thing about it is, for y'all to know, I, I bring my drugs to them and I go by their actions, you know what I'm saying? I put them out faster about just being aggressive or whatever and not working on it, but we still get mad and upset, but we're ready to see that and turn it around. And I'm happy with it. And just like what he said, if they don't have someplace to go or nobody to help them. It's hard to do, I'm just gonna say, okay, go get a job, but you got no place to lay your head. You've not got a town, you ain't got a pair of boots to go get to the job. So what I also do is with some of that money, I'm gonna have to put ten dollars in, I take them to Stevens pipe and skill. And I go in with them, and I've got a good relationship out there with Amanda. And I used to give them a chance, and so she lets them to work. The one little guy, I sent him his job in the fort, but, never had a job as high, he's sick of it to death, but he's a good employee, so, I, I don't know what else I'm supposed to do after this, you know, to see, or whoever to bring it to or whatever, so.
So if I understand, the motion that is made is that we will give you up to a thousand dollars, that you'll break receipts in, however much you spend up to that point, we'll write you a check. And we'll do that up to a thousand dollars for the year, is that correct?
For a year, it's do the try and, try every one time thing.
Yeah, because, and you are, y'all don't see you can stuff. And so the thing about it is, we still do business with the bank and whatever. So my wife Patty, would you break those receipts too?
Just bring them to City Hall, that's what the city-
Yeah, you just bring them.
Yeah, you just come to City Hall and give that to them, or she'll get it prepared. I need a motion, you're gonna need a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay? Thank you for coming, we appreciate you, we appreciate what you're doing. I know it's, it's a lot of work and it takes a lot for somebody to take that stuff on. So, next thing we have is Russell County Recovery Room, Billy Dykes.
Yeah, my name is Sam Wilson, I'm not really a doc, but he did say that there to speak for-
Right, okay.
And he's caught up in work. And what we're doing is asking for a continuance, like we normally get, that y'all pay, I don't know if he put a amount on it or what he said, but it's, we've got money from all the Ford Health and Electric and things. I said we offer recovery room for these rooms for meetings for people. And we're getting a lot of good success out of it, but our crowd of people that come in, you know, most of them are homeless or don't have much money, so we're not really making any money at all. Most of the money is provided by some of the elder members of the clubhouse. But yeah, we was making just full funding for help to wait for the water. And I can't remember the exact amount of what you guys paid last time, but I figured, did he put that down?
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
Five hundred twice a year, yeah. Five hundred twice a year for what we've done in the past doubling, five hundred twice a year to the recovery room. So is that what you're asking for, is just to continue the five hundred dollars twice a year?
Yes.
To go to the recovery room?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So I need a motion if you want to continue that.
I need a motion if you can.
A motion by Eric?
Say it.
Say goodbye for while, we're telling you the one, all in favor? Any opposed?
Yes.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, you're welcome, thank you all. We have, go to Mark up here, I think he has something that he wants to talk to the council about.
Yeah, come on, we're wasting pretty money, how about that? Oh, I, I just had a meeting today with four of the engineers for the easy creek deal. And we just sewed seed in there today, we've got, we've break up most of the roots, we've done a bunch of stuff. What I'd like to do is, we're gonna make this thing a reality down there, and all of y'all here are part of Jamestown, so you understand what that meant to this county. I'd like for you all to entertain annexing that in to the city. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get money to black out the roads. So, we've already got a grant to do picnic tables and fire rings or whatever we're gonna put down there. We've got some, some things coming, but what I want is to have presence of police just driving through. I mean, it doesn't have to be, you just put it on your regular route, you go live in a circle. You're not really taking on anything, we'll do maintenance, we'll do the mowing, whatever we need to do, maybe y'all can help. That, that part doesn't matter, I've gotta turn, I've gotta turn something into the core to make this thing happen. I've been almost, I'm starting on three years trying to deal with this, with the core. And finally, I got a letter back from the Colonel and I haven't even been today on the phone, so, I'm just much closer than I was. I think they're gonna, they're gonna do it. It, it's, it's real favorable now, so.
Judge, did you have, is there a survey of that or a flat?
It is, it is, and that's changed three times.
Okay.
It changed again today, so, yeah. It, it went from, one time it's a hundred and thirty something acres, now it's down to like five or six acres, which is the old park itself. The deal is, I've done this somewhat, I mean, I've had Commerce Office involved and trying to put pressure on the Corps to do something. I, I put a lot of hours into just getting them to move, you know? Cause you get something started, it's typical, federal government to get something started, they stop. You have to go back again, start it all over again, and you go back again, and go back again, so anyway. But we're, we're at the point now where I think we're making progress. I mean, all the people that I've had go down there, they said I'm gonna get arrested because we just went in and cleaned, it's not ours, but we just cleaned up the place.
Is, is it owned by the state?
No, it's owned by the Corps. It's owned by the Corps.
So back in the day, when we had picnic tables, that was the Corps?
That was the Corps, but it was leased to the state.
Okay.
And then the state gave it back up and then the Corps took it back. It took, it took about a year for, for me to prove to them that it was parked at one time.
Yeah.
Those guys didn't know, and they didn't care, you know? Like I said, the only way I get any, any action is when I call Washington and Washington calls somebody there and it trickles downhill, it goes down to Nashville, and then Nashville will call these guys at Somerset and say, will you just take care of him? Cause they don't know how persistent I am, I just keep doing it, doing it. Cause somebody be part of it for, well, I knew something, right? And that's kinda what we're at now, where they're finally doing something different. I, I'd love it if you all would entertain annexing that in. And like I said, I've got, it's gonna cost some money to black top it, I've got that set aside. We got a grant to do those picnic tables and fire rings, and we asked for a grant from Fish and Wildlife to redo that ramp down there, but they say it's not cool for enough days in a year, then we won't give Wildlife any money into it. So we've, we've been turned down twice by them, so, so it also-
So, make an electric, do kayak and-
It'd be kayak, we know it'd be kayak and canoe, which, you know, and, and we're happy with that. If you go in there today, there's plenty of water, right? So Fish and Wildlife could say, yeah, there's, there's two boats down there. That's not one of the things, they, they're more looking for motor boats and, and more motorboat fishing. I mean, there was a doctor that was mainly kayak fishing. That's what I wanna see. I, I tell you what it really is for me, my vision is, that used to be a place where if you didn't have money and you didn't have where to go, you could go there, right? So, we, we can take people that don't have a lot of funds, it's, you know, you can go buy a kayak, two or three hundred bucks. But for a family to go down there and picnic and fish and the, and the bridge itself, no more vehicle, vehicles on it, it's gonna be designated as a handicap fishing pier. We don't have anyone on place coming as far as I know. And you might know that, Tony, is there a handicap fishing pier on that?
I don't know where, I just didn't want to.
Helpless?
No, the fish hatchery.
No, the fish hatchery, yeah, down at the, yeah. But, I mean-
Were you able to read into the road that goes to the left on the old road toward people could have access to get down to the falls down there or?
Not yet. Not yet. That's tricky too.
That would be neat though.
See, what I would do is be able to-
At least it's a good walk and trail.
I would do trails back there, that's where we started out, a hundred and thirty something acres, and then it's- I wanted trails back there. That's where we started out, a hundred and thirty something acres and it's sanitized now. If I can get that, I'll tell you, it's a whole lot easier to work with the Corps once you have something. They wanted, for instance, the alligator, they wanted me to take three quarters of an acre in the water just to get around the leash with Hamilton and the lease that we had. It took about two weeks to get that done. That's how fast that, that they wanted us to have. But also in that same process, they didn't want that, right? So they turned around and changed that lease and nothing, another sixty years. So it's a way to like say, I, I don't have to deal with this anymore, but they gave us that quickly. But that's, that's what I like, I mean, I just would like to request and see if you all would entertain annexing that in. And then whatever I can do to help make that happen, I'll do that.
You say you would make care of all the maintenance and mowing and?
Yep, so forth and so.
And any security lights left down there or?
Maybe, maybe if we can maybe do some solar rock and all. I mean, here's the thing, you all know what it's been like for all these years, since it's been closed down. It's just been a place to dump animals, dump trash. We clean it up every week. You know, it's just a constant thing all, all, on and on and on. But I think being a park area, at least people maybe were respected enough that would just.
What kind of lighting, why they can go, better lighting down there or?
I, I think we, we need to do some lighting, we don't have anything in the plans yet. Because we got people, I, I brought that up and people said, oh no, I like to go down there and look at the sky. If you put the lights down there, it'd be artificial light, you know, so I don't know.
I got you.
I'm okay. Yeah, I wanna find out about water, I didn't wanna figure out how we put some bathrooms back down there.
I went down there and drove through a couple times, totally amazing the difference of this, where y'all cleaned it up and what it was.
We hauled in twenty-six loads of rock and put, you know where the falls is on, as you go around the curve? How far that was dropped, it's all filled up level today. There is no gap. They just smoothed it all out today.
That was the original Jamestown drag strip down there.
That's right, it was from High School, for sure.
But we're down there cooking down there.
A lot of trips around there.
Yeah, it used to have, Fish and Wildlife used to have, you know, it used to have. I don't know what you have to do to, I mean.
Well, it was a little, a little embody here, but the easy, if we have a diagram of it.
I can get you.
Now, the issue would be, there's a residence and a law office on the top of the hill there. Where we do a corridor annexation and then.
Don't you, you can pass there, but you don't even have to ask there.
No, we don't have to do that.
I think you just go the road.
Well, we could.
And those are county roads, they're already named.
We could do that before, we could do it that way. And then if there's a description of the territory we're gonna be annexing, that's about all we need if the board, the council wants to do that. I'm all for it myself.
That damn next parole's going.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm there.
Call it a corridor annex, like we did down at the Jamestown ring. I'm all for it myself, the annexation.
All we're doing, I'd like to see us go up to the bypass where they get the bypass.
So here, long term, just so you know, is trying to get something like a sidewalk or a connection between Jamestown and that is in the long term plans. Is to try to get something where people can, like, possibly with the law down there, and it may be by a bypass, I don't know. Which I had a building, I had enough acres, I had them where we could get the state to give me a, open that, probably back that up or to shut it off. And we could have done that. And I think I need that back, so.
So do we need to just cut that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just said that'd be pretty neat to get a sidewalk going down there.
And that grant tries to the Trail Town too, that you already made. The grant to get the picnic tables and the fire rings this time to Trail Town piece.
Is this something we just need a hole into, you see that the road comes through?
If you do it, you will get those roads already, because those roads are the counties and the bridges, the counties. So you can do those, you know, the road that goes around.
The people that need to know what the boundaries are gonna be before we can annex.
Yeah, but you're just gonna do the roads, right? You're gonna do all the property.
We can do the property out, so we'll do.
So if something happens in there, you can say, hey.
The only thing, the only suggestion I would have is, the, the story was, all the work we did at the city park to upgrade that park and the first night it was vandalized. And we put video cameras up in there and nothing. We haven't realized it, I think we did a newspaper story. So if you're gonna end it, something like that up, a street, maybe some cameras, some security cameras in that area.
That's a good idea, security cameras.
The first night, the first night of playground was vandalized. And eventually it was vandalized, the paint, that the people, that were fixing, that were putting the playground together, they left the paint behind to fix their.
Well, I'm, I'm more, I'm more concerned not about the vandali, vandalism there, I ain't concerned about that. I mean, we're getting a lot of vandalism in there for a while today. But I'm concerned about just the presence, so we don't have drug deals going on, we don't have people down there dropping off animals. We don't like people down there dropping off trash, because they don't know when you're coming. Bro, you know, you know, I mean, I swear, showing up, I don't know, that's why I was in the electric.
If, if we're not taking, if we're not taking the Corps property in and just the roadways, like you're talking about. Yeah, it doesn't generally be a consensual annexation, it'd be easy to do, but I think annexing Corps property is gonna take. Because I would make that into a consensual annexation, the last time I had to do that, sixty to ninety day thing, I, it was a, it was a big process.
We do the roads, let's do the roads. We're worried about, because you can see everybody, just the presence of the ground and through there, people just gonna say, oh, there's. And, and, you know, we'll see what happens. And when they have the chance, but I think if we just do the roads, we're good. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna use county funds to blacktop those two roads. Forty-four, forty-five. I think a lot of electric.
What about maintaining them, Randy? Will that, will that fall in the city or the county?
We'll maintain them, honey, you know, we can talk together, I mean, it's like now. We, we do sidewalks and stuff for you all and, and we've got an interlevel agreement, so, I mean, whatever it does, we can, we'll figure that out. I, I just think it's good for Jame, I think it's good for us county and I think it's good for Jamestown.
It is.
You know, it's a place where people can go for free without going down, looking down and having a meeting, you know, or fishing.
They'll have to go all the way to get them on the, to do the action.
I wish we could, like they said, get some sidewalks that went from Jamestown on down to there, it'd be great to, you could just, you know.
You know, those things that they had where the state's got money to do that, but we gotta get some where first. We can't just go right, we gotta start putting things together, but I think I said that.
But we maybe can work on that, if we can, if it is, can maybe work on.
I appreciate y'all for considering, but I think it's a good thing. Like I said, I ain't asking for.
I think we need to fix the ordinance there.
We'll just drag the ordinance in.
And it's just a corridor. But if we're doing that, take your hell out.
That's why I'm rich.
Well, that's going into the state too. I guess, I'm assuming that's state, it may be federal, I don't know, but you hit the one point seven bypass. You know, that, that would be a consensual annexation right there, because they're gonna give it, come around the road and they're gonna give us that. But the state, when we went down that road, it was, it was just like the Corps, it was basically, you waited that, you waited that time period out to, to do a non-consensual annexation. And I don't remember how long it was, you, it was a long time.
I think one point seven, it's probably all in, it's like, I don't know. I, I think it is because when the banks were put in over there and we tried to get an entrance off of it, you had to pass, you had to be passed out of them. But it's not only the state.
The state side, I think, now I think, but I think the state gave us something back that basically gave us the corridor annexation was out. Next to the Corps didn't, we had to wait it, wait that process out, whatever it was, I can't remember exactly.
That's okay, you tell me, I'll start working on the Corps again. They don't like to hear me now. They don't like the phone call that I made and just start rolling back down the hill. And that's just like.
So what?
They're gonna defend the J D Hamilton right now.
We'll have to draft and ordinance to do that and get the ordinance passed, so that's something H K will need to just work on.
We can get that.
Hey, the new, the new annexation into the counties, that don't have to affect the, because we're under population limit. And besides that, I think the only thing you have to do is now is just notify the county to annex the road.
Okay, so we, that's some gear to work.
Yes, we are, but see, you need the description, the property.
I'll hit that to you.
The only other thing I have is just, kind of just to remind everybody, it's April. We're getting ready to go into the summer time to start probably moving night and maybe I'm thinking we maybe could try to get a few just local bands or gospel bands or something to utilize the state we have over here because it's good setup. We need to utilize it and get some people in there using that. And then I, I think, you know, I think maybe night we can look at once a month instead of trying to do it every other week or whatever. And then try to offset with some different things, some bands or groups or something, just so you can get some adults involved also. And that's just my thoughts, that just things we need to start looking at, also marketplace, you know, we started that. Had pretty good success with it, I guess if we're gonna do that again, we need to start on doing that. I don't know, best option on that, I've thought different times, you know, is it good there or should it, would it be a better place down there in front of the common launch? Where we have that lot down in front of the cemetery, where you've got more room for everybody to sit up there. I, I don't know, you know, you.
I'll go and stay on the square.
But it's hard to see people on the square a lot of times when you, or you're in the parking lot a lot of times, you know, you have.
We do it on the square, I just wonder if Tony would let us have that corner.
Yeah, he let us use that last year, we can use that out in there too, it's just that.
Parking lane.
Yeah, over, where.
Parking lot, just a center.
Yeah, yeah, so, but that's just things that we actually are gonna, I guess, try to get started here. Probably do, maybe not when the school's out, I think, because it. When school's still in, it gets dark so late that you can't, you know. So, but we'll, we'll do that. And anybody else have anything? Yes?
I'm Jeff Perkins, married to Debbie, y'all know where she lives, I think, just past the stoplight down there. We have some property down there, just past the stoplight, all that on the right down there. It's about twenty-two acres, something like that. And we had a realtor do a, I guess that she called it a survey of the best way to sell that or to do that. And that was as having an engineer to come in, a survey engineer to come in and divide that up and to sell it in lots. I think y'all set a precedent here tonight that y'all are willing to help people with their blacktop and the roads. So, you know, I'm just coming to you that I'm sure Brother, Mr. Aaron down the road, he would love to have his, they're down there running on gravel right now. I can provide twenty-one acre lots in there. That would be a whole lot more people paying taxes into the city than, no offense, than one person. Y'all run a blacktop to one person. So, I mean, I just, I'm disappointed in the council tonight, that's, I don't, I don't understand that. They down there to run for council. That's all I've got, I'd just like to, I'd like to be considered for you all paying for the. We would get started on the road for ours and get it divided up because we willing to pay for the blacktop for it. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else have anything they wanna talk about or anything before we?
Just real quick, this one, thank y'all again for being here and doing what you do, it's so regular, I love it. And so I throw my two cents in worth on the new employees. Yeah, I'm, I'm only fifty years old, most of you guys may have a month or two more on me than I have, but. You look about thirty-five.
Thank you, that's bad.
But, yeah, I know whether you buy a car, a motorcycle, house, you get what you pay for. So we're good people, we gotta pay for it. So I, I think it's good to give inexperienced people a chance to learn, but we also need experience too, so don't be afraid to pay what they deserve. I think it's really important to keep that in mind. And again, thanks for doing what you do, I love it, thank you.
Well, thank you, we appreciate that. I appreciate you being here. We need, we'd like to have people to come in and listen sometime and see what all goes on because you've, you know, people need to be involved and know what's going on. I have people fuss about a lot of things sometimes and I would just say, well, you know, the council meetings are open, come anytime and, you know, let everybody know how you're feeling, so that's, that's good. I wish more people would get involved and we appreciate you. And it's nice to hear something positive, so thank you.
I love yours, Greg.
Thank you. Last year, something say?
We need to talk about the roof of the survey.
Make the point.
The roof of the survey, where that, you know, before I came here.
I give, yeah, I give that to H K to look on that.
I wrote Mr. Wooton a letter, a request of the city. And I did not receive a response from him. So I don't know if you want me to write another letter, file a lawsuit against him, I don't know if they has insurance. Uh, just one of those.
How many, how many letters have you sent so far?
I sent one letter, I believe, one. I can, I've got plenty of stationings I can send over. Uh, but I had not, I had not gotten, and he was, I think he was crippled at the time, maybe he was kinda led right, I don't know.
But this is pertaining to the building at the sewer plant, that if you put a roof on, is what this is all about. They put a roof on and it leaked and continued to leak and.
But I would need a direction from the council, if you want me to file a suit against him, I certainly will. I'll do whatever you all want me to do. I don't guess he's insured, that's just my thought. Otherwise, he might have responded already to us, somebody would have. How long ago did you put the roof on? How long ago we put the roof on? Ah, I don't know.
Uh, on March, okay, let me just root this to you, okay? On February the twenty-second, the roof of the Lad Lake pump building located at the newer end of the wastewater treatment plant received storm damage, which resulted in the roof leaking. An insurance claim was filed and Wooten's roof was hired to replace the roof. Wooten's roof then finished the new flat roof on March fourth, twenty twenty-two and was paid eighty, eight thousand five hundred forty-five dollars. Upon completion, the leaks became substantially worse than before the replacement. Water was now leaking into the overhead light fixtures and onto high voltage control panels. Rooting team was contacted and informed of the issues. They returned doing, they returned to doing repairs, they claimed would resolve the leaking issues. The issues were not resolved and only got worse. They were called multiple times with no resolution, as long, as well as H K Cooper sending a letter with no response back. Time passed, leaks persisted, at which point Roger Stockton was contacted upon arrival. He assessed the situation, informing us that the ISO four had not been replaced. It caused the grade of the roof to be an inch below where it needed to be to allow it to drain, thus causing rainwater to stand on the roof. Roger Stockton gave a couple of repair options with estimates, but he was then hired to install a new roof. It was completed on August sixteen for a total of ninety-one hundred dollars. And since then, we've been always.
But I don't know if he posted a bond to do a good job, did he do it, did he do it with the county judge? He just worked for county, did he not?
Uh, I think he had a bond with me. But I don't have any leads.
He watch you.
I told him I'd throw him off the roof if he had leads.
So I guess the question is, at this point, what do you want to do about the situation? Do you want H K to continue to send something else out? Do you want him to try to file a suit? What, what does the council think we need to do?
I wish he had responded to me, you know.
I tried to.
Be nice, but yet.
If I send him one more, one more letter, he'd be thirty days to respond or something. If he doesn't respond, we'll go on.
Was it insurance claim, Ron?
Well.
But, but the check came back to the council claiming, and then he got paid?
I said yes. This was back in twenty-two.
I'm not sure that was handled. Did we, did we file an insurance claim on it?
That's what it says, yes.
That's the way it would have been done. The chairman wrote to us and we wrote the check to him.
Yeah, after he completed it, yeah.
And he got paid.
He got paid, eight thousand five hundred forty-five dollars.
What do you reckon?
Eight thousand five hundred.
Well, you know, I could write another letter, I mean, I, just a matter of business, you know, it needs to be made right. I would hope he had insurance or something like that. If he did, I felt like I'd be here for somebody, some highfalutin lawyer or something, but I never heard anything.
If he did, I felt like I'd be here for somebody, some highfalutin lawyer or something, but I never heard anything.
But I, I'd be glad to, uh, give him thirty days, as councilman said, and then if we don't hear something, report back and have to pull a trigger, that's a bad word,
drop the hammer or something.
Count the same thing here.
Whatever.
So is that the right you want to take, you want him to send another letter with a thirty day response period? And then after that, if we don't hear anything back, then we revisit what we want to do at that point?
Mm-hmm.
Is that it?
I think, yeah, yeah, go ahead and do it.
Go ahead and send the thirty, thirty day letter.
Is this a, is this a new and better invoice here, I don't remember the ninety-nine hundred, right?
Just the one that...
That, that's what we paid.
That's who we paid, we got, that just redone.
Can I keep this?
Yeah.
Okay.
We probably had to have it redone, yeah, for the back for claws.
We pay one for the insurance, we pay the second.
I can't hold it.
We pay how much, second, yes.
I'm gonna need that money back.
Anybody else? Not, I need a motion. Motion to adjourn, Rachel, second. Second, my very, all in favor, any opposed? Thank you all, appreciate you all.